Today is Tuesday, October 18th, 2016, and it is 7:00 PM. Regular meetings are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall. City Clerk, can you please call roll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Minigar?
Present.
Councilmember Genaway?
Present.
Councilmember Capida?
Here.
Mayor Protam Susiewicz?
Here.
And Mayor Davies?
Here. Thank you. We have a quorum.
At this time, I would like to ask John Pointer of the American Legion Post 281 to come forward for the invocation, and then we will have Boy Scout Troop 872 come forward to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Dear Lord, we gather for this meeting. Give us the use of our gifts of peace and understanding that we may approach the matters we must handle with sincere and just arts. May you watch over and guide our tongues that we may not hurt our friends and with whom we work for the betterment of our communities and our country. Keep us always true to the principles on which we were founded. We ask this in your name, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, please remain standing. Boy Scout Troop 872 color guard, please advance. Please place your right hand over your heart. Those in uniform, please salute. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands for, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two, audience, you may be seated.
If you guys want to stay up there, we're going to come down and take a few pictures. If I can get the troop leaders to come up as well, that'd be great. And I have to tell you, because of you, I've put on a few pounds. They are selling the caramel popcorn in front of the grocery stores, and the chocolate-covered caramel popcorn is delicious, but it is not calorie-free. I'm just warning you right now. But definitely want to help out. So what I'm going to do is say, first of all, thank you. Can we have our parents stand up, please? We want to thank you very much again. Without you, they wouldn't be here. So thank you for your dedication. I'm going to give you the mic, and if you want to give your name and your school, then just pass it on. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Baum, and I'm from St. Anne's School.
Hi, my name is Reeve Herman, and I'm from Nigella Hills Middle School.
Hi, my name is Sean Jongier, and I'm from St. Mary's School.
Hi, my name is Blake Mealy, and I'm from Nigella Hills Middle School.
Hi, my name's Brendan Belovia, and I'm from Nigella Hills Middle School.
Hi, my name is Thomas Moshtry, and I'm from St. Anne's School.
Hi, my name is Brian Athwaite, and I'm from Donwana Vila Middle School.
Hi, my name is Nancy Tomco.
Thank you again. Great job. And if you want, we can take some pictures. for the 35 years of providing health care services to Laguna Nigella residents. In 1991, Dr. Meehan was instrumental in opening Oso Nigella Healthcare Center in Laguna Nigella. It served the medical needs for the residents of Laguna Nigella and surrounding communities and surrounding communities, and provided patients an opportunity to visit a medical office seven days a week. You don't see that very often. Their philosophy, walk-ins are always welcome, gave people an option to go to the office as opposed to the hospital for non-life-threatening urgent care. The city of Laguna Nigella thanks Dr. Meehan for his commitment to the medical field and wishes him much success and happiness in his retirement. We do have a resolution, and Councilmember Genaway will be seeing him at an event and should be presenting that. All right, Nick's presentation is a proclamation declaring October 23rd through October 31st as Red Ribbon Week. The city proudly promotes a healthy drug-free lifestyle in our youth. Drug awareness and education are vital and are key elements in the fight against illicit drug use in the community. And one thing I just want to talk about is, I know in the last four years, that's really been a priority to me, is making sure that we have a drug awareness out there, especially within our teens, and help with our Mayor Protam. We've put on workshops for the city. The staff has done a fantastic job. We just recently had one called Better Soar Than Sorry for our teen athletes, and we will continue to make sure that we have that commitment, to make sure that our community is safe. That concludes our presentations and brings us to public communication. Good timing on that one. All right, I'm going to call up Michael Curtis, and if you'd like to please come up, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you, Mr. Curtis.
Good evening, Michael Curtis, 298-21, store it all circle. If y'all forgive me for my appearance, I'm trying to run off a few pounds, too. I just came in from Louisiana, the state where they have a lot of fried foods, so I had to run here. But this can be a better time either for what I want to talk about. I'll start. Some of the cons of cannabis use that I've learned throughout the years, I just wanted to share, because I know there's a prop on the ballot this year for legalizing marijuana in some areas. This is what I know. First of all, it kills brain cells. If used during development of the human body, it hinders the growth of the frontal lobe in the brain, which is responsible for cognition and language and arithmetic skills. This could result in lower grades in high school. In addition, it dulls critical senses, taste, touch, smell, sight, and hearing. Has been known to cause psychosis, according to Bill O'Reilly on Fox News. Cases have been shown it can cause hallucinations, causes a break or loss of reality in some cases. It's also a gateway drug. And if legalized in or near Laguna Nigella, could result in a city that is lagging and nonproductive, or less productive than it already is. And lastly, CBS Health, the company I employed with, took the initiative to stop selling all tobacco products. This means cigarettes and smokeless tobacco. This is an indication of faith and responsibility, because they took a hit, losing $6 billion annually from cutting this tobacco sale. So my question to the public, I guess everyone here and everyone watching, if CBS Health took the initiative to ban tobacco, a drug that has been used for many years and was deemed harmless many times, but we now know it is very dangerous and it is still legal, why should there be any thought in our minds why we should not legalize the use of cannabis? Did I say that right? I'm against the use of cannabis, and there's no thought in my mind that it should be legalized. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Curtis. All right, that concludes our, actually, that concludes public communications. We will now move on to our consent calendar, items one through nine. Are there any items that need to be pulled for comment or discussion?
I'd like to pull item six for comment and question.
Councilmember Capida?
No items to pull.
Okay, all right. Can I have a motion to move the remaining?
No moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's move to agenda item number six. Councilmember Genaway?
Okay, this is the approval for the concrete cutting for sidewalk inspections and to remove trip hazards. So in addition to being consistent with this CJPIA, it's also consistent with some of the items that will be looked at in the Orange County Strategic Plan on Aging. And that plan is in its very preliminary stages, but it'll address how we as a county and how we as cities prepare for our growing senior population. In approximately 20 years, in Orange County, one in four residents will be a senior citizen, and currently, one in three fall each year, and falls are the leading cause of injury or death due to injury for seniors. So I have a question, though. Are our city demographics refined enough by age to identify neighborhoods where there's a higher density of senior citizens?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we haven't looked at the demographics, however, the initial, I guess, goal for us to hit the areas that there's large student population, younger kids using the sidewalks. So our goal is to start in those areas and then cover the entire city.
Okay, well, I would ask that while you're prioritizing the neighborhoods, maybe look at if we see where there's concentrations of seniors and move those more to the top of the list.
Okay, we'll definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I move the item.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Item moved. All right, Nick's is Park and Recreation, item number one. At this time, I would like to have Director of Parks and Recreation, Alison Giglio, provide a staff report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council members. Recently, the Parks and Recreation Commission met with the Senior Citizens Committee for the first-ever joint committee meeting. The meeting was held in an effort to introduce the commission to senior citizens committee objectives and projects that benefit the aging community, as well as introduce the committee to the commission's overall goals related to the broad scope of recreation. It was also a great networking opportunity, and it allowed all members to learn why they do what they do for Laguna Nigella, which ultimately achieves a common goal to make recreation opportunities better in the community. Commission Chair Cashin briefly updated the committee about projects throughout the year, including capital improvement prioritization and budget recommendations for city council and playground renovations for four neighborhood playground parks, or four neighborhood parks. Senior Citizens Committee Chair Ulrich, who is here with us in the audience tonight, updated the commission about a newly approved committee budget, which supported brain and fitness classes, which are designed to keep the mind active. And I know I can benefit from those as well. A collaborative dance coordinated by a committee consisting of senior committee members, AgeWell Senior Services, Laguna Nigella Senior Club members, and city staff. And there were about 90 people who attended that dance, and it was a lovely evening. And lastly, Sea Country staff are in the process of researching a computer instructor who will be available to assist older adults, and this instructor will complement two other computer opportunities already offered at the senior center, including regular computer classes and the popular tech tutors, which connects teen volunteers with seniors who need assistance with their tablets and smartphones. The committee addressed the need for additional parking at the senior center, personal trainers at the fitness center within the senior center, and possible expansion of the center in the future. And it was suggested that the committee consider a five-year plan for improvements in projects. And recently, the idea of a fitness park, especially designed for seniors, was also suggested. So the commission and the committee discussed this, if it would be beneficial to seniors in the community, and it would include equipment and facilities specific to older adults, such as lawn bowling, walking track, low-impact fitness equipment, among some suggestions. Consensus was that more research and surveying is necessary for potential users, and that such a park may be better suited for adults, not just for seniors. And the idea of a multi-generational facility was also suggested, attracting all ages and abilities. So this is something that they would like staff to look into further. Commissioner McGinley presented the idea of hosting a senior games event in Laguna Nigella, and due to our, that's because we have an active and growing senior population who engage in pickleball, swimming, basketball, and bocce ball, just to name a few of the sports. There are currently regional, state, national, and international senior games, and there are a few cities surrounding us who host events as well. And this idea seemed to be supported by the committee, the commission, and staff, and is believed that hosting such an event will be positive and encouraging for our aging community, and a good statement in the promotion of health and wellness. So staff plans to research options that will better suit our community, and pending council budgetary support, we'll look into doing that for our next fiscal year. Overall, I would say this meeting was a huge success, and I've received a lot of positive feedback about it. And we have every intention of making it an annual collaborative meeting. And this concludes my recap of the meeting, and I'm available for any questions you might have. Any questions or comments?
No, I think it was a great meeting, to bring the two groups together, and they actually got to discuss and talk about what they do, and I think there was some things learned by each group, but it was a very good meeting, and the collaboration really go far.
Do we need to pass this? This was just a staff report, correct?
Status, that's all.
All right, well, that concludes the agenda, and we're going to move on to other business and council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Capida.
Along with my colleagues, I attended the League of Cities, and a lot of great sessions, had a lot of good panel discussions, and some very interesting discussions that we all had gone to. So I think it was a great, great event. And other than that, that's all I have to report.
Okay, Councilmember Minigar?
Not to repeat what my colleague just mentioned, on Tuesday, October 11th, along with Mayor Protam Jerry Slusiewicz, I attended the special meeting on the Agura Status with the city manager and community development director, and we were getting the latest and the greatest from the project's developer, Mr. Sadigi, about what he's up to, and all of his revisions to the master plan of the one and only, I guess, monumental site in our beautiful city. So I'm very anxious to, you know, to move forward with the project so that it goes to the planning commission and then city council, and then we can discuss those items in public. On Thursday, October 13th, I was invited by the Boy Scouts of America, Orange County, to attend the breakfast, the leadership breakfast with the chairman and CEO of Exxon Mobile Corporation in Irvine, and it was a big meeting and an eye-opener. I was very impressed with the caliber of Mr. Chairman and CEO of Exxon, talking about how he started his profession, you know, from the bottom in Texas, and he was given all the credits for being a Boy Scout and being an Eagle Scout. So I'm very proud to see quite a few of our troops, 772 leaders there, along with a lot of other people there. Then I went to another meeting on October 13th at the TCA headquarters to hear the latest activities with the transportation corridor agencies, San Joaquin Hills, and all other toll roads in the county, along with behind, I guess, the closed doors, talking about a lot of things that I'm not allowed to talk about. And then on Friday, October 14th, I was invited by SCAG's president to attend the Active Transportation Forum in the city of Garden Grove. I was very impressed with the presentation of the mayor of Garden Grove that presented to us, and Darryl Johnson, CEO of OCTA, and CEO of SCAG, and everybody else who was there. The bottom line is, what I was interested was to see how we can take advantage of the federal and state grant fundings that happen to be available under ATP programs, cycles number one and number two, and also cycle number three that Caltrans District 12 in Orange County is developing. So I'll be very interested to sit down with our city manager and maybe Public Works Director, Community Development Director, to see how we can take advantage of, you know, those grants, meaning free money, and our taxpayers, I think, are entitled to take full advantage of those programs. So with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Mayor Davies. Relatively short time between the two. On Saturday, the 8th, and Tuesday, the 11th, there was a Parks and Rec Tier Three Outreach, Public Outreach Program. Mayor Davies and I attended Tuesday, the 11th, I believe she did the 8th as well, which I did not attend. But it was pretty well attended at the senior center. 15 to 20 people came in. I thought the designer, LSA, who designed this building, did a really good job reaching out to the public, finding out what the needs are for a new community center down at Crown Valley Park. Again, we're going to have, I think, a few more of these before all is said and done. Sad news, we had our first West Nile virus of the year in Orange County today, unfortunately. 33 people with neuroinvasive disease so far this year. It is actually slightly better than last year, where we had 45 at this time, and so this cooling, this little rain we had, was all good. But the bad news is, it's supposed to heat up again tomorrow for another week, where it's supposed to be in the 90s, so that's when these mosquitoes are still out. We are near the end of the season, usually by the end of October. Mosquito season is over until April, May, depending on the weather, of course. But again, just protect yourself when you're out and about. Use deet, use protection, dump standing water, it's the same message, but we've got to just be self-protection, otherwise those people who don't want to get sprayed, if you can't protect yourself, the government will do it for you. And, you know, that's not what a lot of people want, including myself, so just take self-protection. Finally, I want to make a comment across the board to our staff. We have been getting a number of questions, emails, I'm sure all my colleagues have as well, on a variety of subjects. I don't know if it's just because it's election season, or if it's just the season of, you know, questions, but on a variety of different things, and they have really done a great job across the board handling citizen concerns professionally, keeping us in the loop, asking us for our input, and in handling, in some cases, the things that could be handled on a staff level, on a staff level, very quickly, very efficiently, very professionally. And I know we have such a professional staff, I don't think you guys get enough credit, so I just want to take this moment to thank you for your professionalism, from the top all the way down to the, you know, the temporary workers, you know. Everyone's doing a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Genaway?
Hey, on October 5th, I participated with Sergeant Jack Songer and his team in the National Walk to School Day at Laguna Nigella Elementary. It was a lot of fun, greeting the students as they arrived and handing out labels that look like sheriff badges. Kids really liked those, they felt like they were sheriff for a day. Last Tuesday was the Junior Civic Workshop, and David Chiroby and Katnent Nguyen from the Register of Voters, along with our city clerk, Eileen Gomez, were the guest presenters. And they even brought a voting machine for the students to use. They got to try out the machine, and I think they all left eager to be old enough to be a voter. I don't know if that's because they'll be 18 or because they'll get to vote, but I'm saying it's because they get to vote. I'm the vice chair of the Orange County Public Library Advisory Board, and we met last Thursday and discussed and established a strategic visioning subcommittee to develop recommendations for long-range strategic vision for our library system. Libraries are changing, the way people are using them is changing, and so we, you know, want to keep up with that and keep the technology up with it. I attended the Orange County Senior Citizens Advisory Council meeting, and in addition to reviewing the services and programs that are available to our seniors, we also reviewed the state legislature proposals that will affect senior citizens. And then yesterday, along with our city's water quality manager, Nancy Palmer, the new board of the Orange County Watershed Educational Center and OC Park staff, we met to discuss OC Park's plans for development of the site of the Orange County Watershed Educational Center in Aliso Creek and Wood Canyon Wilderness Park. Yesterday was also the Military Support Committee meeting, and CSC Kevin White of the USS Stockdale was here, and he presented Marilyn McCloskey with the gun casings and the American flag from the ceremony that was held aboard the Stockdale to honor our former mayor, Jerry McCloskey. The Fairways to Freedom Golf Tournament raised over $27,000 for, yeah, it was great, that's the net, for sailors, Marines, and their families. So thank you very much to our generous residents and businesses. In addition to raising the money, 27 military members got to golf as being sponsored by our community. So thank you to everyone who participated in that. And now Laguna Nigella has a lot of clean cars. This Saturday was the car wash to benefit the USS Stockdale. So in addition to the sailors washing, Boy Scout Troop 734 was out there, too. So thank you, boys, for giving up your Saturday and coming out to wash cars, and 150 cars were washed for a net of over $2,600. And that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
My car is clean now, so it's a good thing.
Well, you were washing them.
Yeah, I was washing them. It's my workout. I, of course, attended the League of Cities Conference as well, and I was appointed as state director, so I'm looking forward to that role in representing Orange County. I also get to do a business walk with three flags. You know, we all say that we are a business-friendly city. Not only do we not require a business permit, but we don't just stop and we cut that ribbon. We make it a point to making sure, what we can do to make sure that these businesses continue to succeed. So I went with the chamber, and we did a walk down at three flags and hit every business, along with Leszy Roseberry, our community development director, and it was really great input, and a lot of them are
input, and a lot of them are very excited with the gateway, because there's going to be a lot of foot traffic. So this is business that normally won't get down there, and now it's going to be there. So it was great to do, and I'm looking forward to doing it again. And that's it, because I think everybody else covered everything. So we're going to move on to staff. Sergeant Songer?
Just Red Ribbon Week, we'll be out at all the schools next week, so we'll see everybody out there.
Okay. Director Elson? City Attorney Dixon? Chief Adams? All right. Leslie? Debbie? Eileen? Okay. I bet you Ellison has something.
I do. One of our largest events of the year, Haunted Trails, is coming up next week, and it's going to be at the Old County Courthouse this year due to the construction at Crown Valley Park. On Thursday, October 27th, Friday, October 28th, and Saturday, October 29th, tickets are on sale for $13 pre-sale, and will be $15 at the event, and it is very scary and recommended for eight years and up. We do have a lot of adults that can't even make it through the event, so not for the faint of heart. Also, it's not too late to take the 30 Mile Oktoberfest Swim Challenge at Crown Valley Park Pool, and you can swim or waterwalk your mileage and log it. And more information for both of these events is available on the city website, cityoflaguna.org, or in the city's recreation brochure.
Ellison, there's an all-timers walk on Saturday as well, isn't there?
Yes, there is, and I do not have the details on me, but I do know that it is this week.
It's at the community park?
I believe it's at the, I don't want to speak, I think it's at the regional park.
Regional park, 8 o'clock, Saturday.
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Assistant City Manager Fox? Director Abazadi?
Yes, I would like to inform the city council and the community that Tier Two project, where at Crown Valley Park, we're building a new bridge and two parking lots, is making very good progress. We're actually about three weeks ahead of his schedule. And if you visit the city website, we provide weekly updates on that. There's also very nice time-lapse photography there, for about four minutes, you can actually see how the project started and where it's at right now. So just wanted to provide that update to the community.
City Manager Foster? All right, well, with that said, we adjourn at 7:29.